Lisa.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry about that, I didn't see where my microphone was. We will call to order the meeting for Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. Call the roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dear Lord, tonight, as we come before you, I want to say a special thank you. Thank you for first responders and for men and women in law enforcement and the medical field and obviously our men and women in armed forces. And not just in this country, but countries around the world. I think, based on recent events, we all can appreciate the heart of servitude that you put on them to allow them to put themselves in harm's way to protect other people. And so, you know, with all the things going on in the world today, I don't think that we say thank you often enough that you do have, truly, you have servant leaders out there that are watching over us. Again, thank you for your love, for your grace, for your forgiveness, and thank you for placing an attitude of servitude on those people's hearts. Pray these things in your son's name and all God's people said.
Amen.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Lots of folks here. Love it when we have people come to council meetings. So we will start with item five then, which is our citizens forum. And it looks like I had a few people sign up to speak. So residents are invited to speak on agenda or non-agenda items. We just ask you that you approach the podium, make sure you're speaking into the microphone so the folks on YouTube can hear. And just keep in mind that comments are limited to three minutes and we are not allowed to deliberate with you on those comments. We do hear them, though, and we do appreciate your comments. And if it's a question or if it's something that somebody needs to get back with you, we do have your contact information and you're more than likely will hear back from somebody either up here or on staff. So with that, we will start off with, I think it's Mr. Bell with A+ towing.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind approaching the podium and just speak clearly into the microphone?
How you doing? This is the first time I've been here. I live outside the city of Shenandoah. I'm the owner of A+ towing. Due to the increase of fuel and everything, the volume, people moving in, we're sitting in more traffic, idled. Well, I'm here to ask for an increase on the towing charge of what we're allowed. The county offers us $250 on a wreck and a P-ride, prisoner ride, and a $50 cleanup and a $100 windshield. This covers for like rollovers and stuff. I ask you all to take consideration for that because of the inflation and cost of living going up, but mainly the fuel. We're being hurt out here right now. We need y'all's support on that part. I got better things to do besides be here, okay, but somebody had to tell y'all that we need some help out here. It's been a while since we got an increase. I can't even tell you how many years it's been, but it's been a while. So with that, that's all I have to say. Other than that, contact your commissioners. Ask them what happened to the flyover at 2:42 going eastbound to let up on the traffic. That affects our city, y'all's city. I don't know if y'all have anything to do with that, but do y'all?
We can't deliberate with you during this.
You can't deliberate.
But somebody'd be more than happy to get back with you on that.
Okay. All right. So in saying that, then, I guess I'm pretty much cut for time. I just wanted to bring that up and maybe y'all could get with the chief and ask him, and we just go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Or, I still got, what, two minutes?
Yeah, you still got a minute and a half left.
Okay. So, next time, I can just bring about 15 owners in here with us in green and orange shirts, okay? But I don't think we have to do that because they know, we all know, I'm here, we're speaking, we need some help. It'd be greatly appreciated if y'all consider it. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Mr. Frank Powell.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm back, as I said, I would be from January 26th, when I came in before and we talked about issues of corruption. After I left, you guys did not follow Texas Government Code 551.042. You had about a six-minute discussion about an off-agenda matter that is not per the government code. And I want to be clear, this does not involve Mr. McLeod, Dr. McLeod, I'm sorry, or Mr. Broad, but it involves everybody else, okay? And you guys know this is a violation. Somebody actually talked about it in the last two or three sessions. So I'm here today to again state that you, I think that was a cowardice act. Because I left and then you wanted to slander me. What I said was absolutely true. And what you said, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Raymaker, was patently false. So, one option of relief I have is to seek an injunction to stop you from violating this government code, and I intend to do that. Also, failure to take my complaint that I asked you to take, I think is a violation of two Texas penal codes, 3902, Abuse of Official Capacity, and 3903, Official Oppression. You can look those up yourself and decide if they apply to you and who they apply to. So finally, what I want to come here and say tonight is I do plan on filing for an injunction to stop you from violating the Texas Government Code in these open meetings. It's a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I'll get to that probably in the next few weeks. I'm going to look into the possibility of the violation of the Texas Penal Code. In fact, I'm fairly certain you have violated it. And lastly, because of the false and slanderous comments that several of you made on January 26th against my factually correct statements, today, my attorney filed a civil lawsuit against each of you individually. And I will name the people who it is. It's Michael T. Wheeler, Mayor Wheeler, Ronald E. Raymaker, John T. Fletcher, Ms. Ryder, Catherine Ryder, Mr. Farabee, he made comments, and I don't think I missed anybody. So you should be expecting your citations delivered to you soon. And lastly, again, I want to emphasize it, everything I'm saying here tonight has nothing to do with Dr. McLeod or Mr. Broad. Everything I've watched on the YouTube videos for the past several months, maybe back the year, these gentlemen are above the fray. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to Ms. Betty Anderson.
Betty Anderson, 503 Rosewood Drive. And I just would like to make a statement tonight that I was very disappointed at the last city council meeting on February 23rd that the city council voted to extend the hours of CATS' hours to 2:00 AM from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Anyway, exactly 19 years ago that night, on February 23rd, 2003, 19 years before that night, our oldest son Jimmy was killed by a drunk driver. The couple had been bar hopping from one location to another, and they were all fall-down drunk when they slammed into our son with their Dodge Ram truck. He was life-lighted and he died that night. So, I'd like to say that the later these bars and restaurants that serve alcohol, the longer that they stay open, the longer people stay out and drink. Forced people spoke last city council meeting, spoke against extending the hours for CATS. And even our police chief, our police chief said he didn't really think that it would be more of a problem to extend it a couple more hours. But I'm not sure that the police officers who mopped up after my son would say that. And really, I was just shocked that the hours were extended. So I did a little homework. Main event closes, yes, at 2:00 AM, and that was brought up a couple of weeks ago. Twin Peaks closes on Friday and Saturday at 12:30 AM. On Sunday through Thursday, they close at 11:30 PM. Dave and Buster's closes at 1:00 AM. XYZ Bar, 11:00 PM. Marriott Bar is Marriott's Hotel, closes for drinks at 10:00 PM. Michael McLeod was the only one who voted against extending the hours, and I do want to thank you for that, Councilman McLeod. Thank you. But I'm really not sure how well our city council did their homework on that issue before they made that very important decision. And that was a decision that can be the difference between life and death, and my son is a good example of that. We want to have good businesses within our surrounding community, but I would like for our city council to listen to residents first and then take their interests into consideration before the interests of surrounding businesses. I think Shenandoah needs to set the example for communities, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into item six, which is council inquiry. Does anybody have anything at this time?
Bill, would you like to address the inquiry thing?
No, there's nothing to address.
All right.
Okay, then we'll move into item seven, which is discussion and possible action to adopt the filing resolution. A resolution opposing an elevated connection or other grade separation between Grogan's Mill Road and Research Forest and supporting an at-grade solution.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion?
I think it's great that we're finally, we're going to, I know we said it verbally, but it's just time to go ahead and get it from the official record that, you know, we're opposed to any grade separation. So that's really what this is about.
Yeah, and it's been on our thoroughfare plan for a while.
Yeah. I was about to say, I mean, if I remember correctly, when the city council signed the resolution of support for the underpass, it was because it was on the Montgomery County, the South County, Montgomery County Mobility Plan, which the previous council approved. And so, if we want to restate that, then yeah, now's a good time. So any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item nine, discussion and possible action to approve the 2022 second quarter budget amendments.
Mayor and council, is this hearing your agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Item nine is discussion and possible action to adopt the filing ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending Chapter 90.6 of the city's sign ordinance and providing for an effective date.
Counsel, this is modifying the sign ordinance, the section that deals with political signs that, excuse me, came out of the last meeting. And what it allows is a longer window of time to put the signs out and to pick them up, but it still limits the number of signs to one sign per candidate.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve with a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now we'll move to item nine. Sorry, Lisa, discussion and possible action to approve the 2022 second quarter budget amendments.
Mayor and council, is this hearing your agenda to pack our the second quarter budget amendments for this fiscal year? In the general fund, there was a recruiting cost for current building official. There was also a reassignment of budget funds from an underrun in the Lane and the Angels to go towards the Easter egg hunt for increased costs due to the current market. Then there was also the capital project additions for those two water sewer projects, the additional $85,000 for professional services on the research lift station project, and then the forced main upsizing on the Pinecroft, forced main coming off of the Pinecroft Lift Station.
Move that we approve presented budget amendment?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to approve. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 10, discussion and possible action to authorize the purchase of police chargers or Tahos.
I move to table this item at this time.
I have a motion to table by Councilman Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Primarily reason to table is because none of these vehicles are available. If you read them, they're 360 days out, so.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to table. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have some discussion, and I think that's, whether we table it or, I think the discussion, my suggestion is we just hold off any purchasing of Tahos or chargers. I mean, we've got a reasonable fleet. I know we've got a couple of vehicles that are, you know, showing some age a little bit. And one of the nice things we have is we've got an advantage if we have a fairly modern fleet and we can keep them running. And I just, I think at this time, typically, we've tried to stay ahead because of budget concerns, you know? If one year we just don't have the money, well, we can survive. This is a weird thing that I don't think anybody thought about. But the vehicles are really far out, and I think we just hold our own with the current fleet and just, that would be my proposal. I don't know what, if you had any thoughts on that, I mean, we've got.
I do. I think that's potentially hazardous for our fleet. I think that if we hold off any longer, I'm concerned about the future as far as, if we wait longer, then we won't have these cars to replace the aging fleet that we have. Next year, I'm concerned that we're going to run into the same issues. And if we do that, then we'll be substantially behind the curve. And then we're running into a bigger problem with vehicle maintenance, and I wish we were already running to that issue now. And then we're going to double that because once vehicles start breaking down, then we double up on vehicles, on their usage, which will double up on the wear and tear. So that's my concern.
I think we have a motion to table.
Okay, so yeah, I was about to say, we have a motion to table with a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So item 11 is discussion and possible action to renew an agreement with the Woodlands Township for Fire Services. Who's going to take that one, Kathy or Joseph?
I am.
Oh, okay.
Counsel, we've had an agreement with the Woodlands Fire for a number of years. That agreement was about to expire. We did an interim agreement last year, which, because the Woodlands did not want to pay anymore for our police service. We've now negotiated this new contract, which is for another five years and options to renew. And so, this one is based upon the Woodlands Township Board's desire, is based what we pay on tax rate, and it will go into effect in increments over five years.
Move that we approve the agreement?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to approve. We have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion?
I've got some. Section 5.1 says the calculation of the annual sum will be, use the total valuations before being reduced by any exemption.
Correct.
It's the past one? Is that the same language that was in the one?
The one in the past had no official relationship to tax rate. The one that we originally did 10 years ago, we agreed upon a rate which was roughly based upon the same tax rate. And that agreement had, every year could go up up to 5% depending upon whether or not the Woodlands Fire Department expenses went up 5%. In negotiating this new rate, they preferred to tie it to a tax basis because some years their expenses went up 7% or 8%, and we had a 5% limit. And some years it went up less, 2% or 3%.
It also states, beginning with the city's 2020 certified tax rule.
Yes.
Year one.
Yes.
But, and then in A, the total valuation before being reduced by any exemption on the most recent years certified tax rule.
Yes.
I think that's in.
It's, we're always running one year behind so that we know, and the Woodlands knows, we can see what the tax rate was for that year before.
So then year two is 2021?
Correct.
Okay, I had the same reading that seemed like it's the tax that just came out.
It's always running one year.
Okay. My other concern, and you said, based on the taxes we collect.
No, not on, it's on the tax rate.
Right, it's based on valuation, not on taxes we collect. With a number, and this is a big concern I have, with the number of our homes, we have significant numbers of exemptions. I mean, up to half the property values depending upon the number of exemptions they have. So it's not the .1799 on the valuation that the city might collect. It's whatever the valuation is times .1.
Yes, we spent, Lisa and I had numerous negotiations with the Woodlands over this. And the trade-off was two things. One, stepping up each year to the five-year step-up so that we didn't incur a huge jump in year one. And then number two was running the year behind. So that's how we, the Woodlands was insisting on their tax, the valuation, the way they wanted it. And so to lower what we're actually paying, we negotiated the year behind every year plus the step all five years.
Yeah, the concern, of course, is the .179, that you basically could pass through that we collected, pass along to the Woodlands Fire Services.
When Lisa and I ran.
And what do the numbers say?
When Lisa and I ran the calculations, making those assumptions, we were better off paying a year back. Now, we have to make some assumptions on that, on how much things go up, but we were actually monetarily better off paying the year based upon the year prior's valuations.
So their goal then is to get to the 10 cents per dollar, which was just like the EST4?
Yes. Yes. The original deal 10 years ago was based on 10 cents on the valuation, but it had a 5% year maximum increase. What we're doing now is going, we're basing it on valuation.
So in year five, we go another agreement?
We will renew it, but it'll be at the 10 cent mark.
So no more escalation?
Correct.
So I didn't do the math on it. What's the actual, what's the number that we're paying? And what's the delta between that and what we previously, the year prior?
I think it's about $20,000 more we'll pay this year, isn't it?
So using the certified value, year one would be 992, 992,000. And I believe we are at. We're about 890.
So a $100 increase.
And if you did the 10 cents on that first year. Instead of the 0.9, you did the .1, you'd be at 1.1. So if we started off right at the 10 cent for valuation.
Right.
You'd be at 1.1, so that'd be another $100,000.
Any more discussion?
Still, even at that, we couldn't, we couldn't run our department through.
Less than $3 million.
No, we're not.
Everything.
Just wouldn't admit the contract.
Every single year we've gone to TML, I've looked into it, it's $2.5 to $3 million, so.
It's a great deal for us. No, and it's a good business partnership.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1. Item 12, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution. A resolution expressing support and solidarity with the people of Ukraine and providing an effective date.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman McLeod. We have a second by Councilman Scotto. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to obviously say some things. I've got an Ukrainian friend. Some of y'all know my nephews are Ukrainian. They haven't been able to speak to their grandmother. They have no contact with her in quite a while. My friend, who is a professor at Opuma State, sent me a message, and I'm going to read that if you will. 14 days, this is her words, "14 days ago, Ukraine woke up to the sound of falling bombs. Putin's Russia attacked Ukraine and started his cruel war, taking the lives of children and women, destroying family homes, schools, hospitals, and cathedrals. This war started many years ago with propaganda weakening the political and military leadership in Ukraine. It continued in 2014, when after the Ukrainian Revolution of Dignity, Russia invaded Ukraine and annexed Crimea and Donbass. Now they escalate the war and aim to strip Ukraine of its political independence, its territorial integrity, and its cultural dignity. Just because Putin and his regime want to own Ukrainian land, to slave Ukrainian people and to rebuild the Soviet Empire. In 2022, in the middle of Europe, Putin shamelessly threatens the world with nuclear attack and holds Ukraine hostage. The Ukrainian people fight heroically and are very grateful for all the support from the world." That was her message. And I'd also like to read out loud the actual resolution. Whereas Ukraine is the second-largest country by area in Europe, a country with an area almost the size of Texas. And whereas Ukraine has a population of approximately 44 million men, women, and children. And whereas Ukraine regained its independence in 1991 following the dissolution of the Soviet Union, with more than 90% of the Ukrainian citizens in support of independence with majorities in every region. And whereas on February 24th, 2022, Russian forces launched unprovoked full-scale invasion of a peaceful, independent country, Ukraine. And whereas the council supports Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity, and stand by the people of Ukraine and its democratically elected institutions and representatives. And we support the Ukrainians' people's right to live in peace and determine their own future. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Shenandoah that the city of Shenandoah hereby extends support to the people of Ukraine at this time of unprovoked aggression, and stands in solidarity with members of the Ukrainian population who have chosen to make Texas their home. The city of Shenandoah will make every effort to avoid purchasing materials or investments that would benefit the Russian government in their war of oppression." The City of Shenandoah will make every effort to avoid purchasing materials or investments that would benefit the Russian government in their war of oppression. That's that's the resolution.
Thank you for that, Council McLeod. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we could all. Think we could all agree that we feel and support and pray for the people of Ukraine. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the resolution of support passes 5-0. Okay, we will move on to item 13, which is Discussion Regarding Parking on the Grass.
Council, you'll see in your agenda pack, the on the agenda report, there have been some concerns expressed by council members. And I know there have been some from residents in the past too about vehicles parked on the grass. Whether it's partially on the grass in the street or partially on a driveway on the grass or fully on the grass. We've seen kind of a range of of these things. So I know that the city attorney has met with Jackie and our code enforcement officer to discuss some changes. I don't know, Bill, do you want to go into what you're proposing?
Well, really, I was gonna, I think Council McLeod had expressed some of the concern. I don't know if I addressed in my proposal or not what you were looking for. On the parking in the grass?
Yeah.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The, is that up here?
When I hit, yeah, I mean, the the concerns that that people have expressed is, of course, people parking not on the lay down curb but off the lay down curb into the grass. And is that, you know, how much of a problem it is? I've heard, we've had complaints at City Hall. I've also had complaints. And I think Jackie has of people will park on one side of the road, not near the curb. So there's like a foot off the curb. So then the person that parks on the other side for cars to get back and forth parks up on the curb and into the grass.
And there are also concerns about emergency vehicles, big delivery trucks, things like that being in the paths when there's two cars.
Well, in the valley, we've got the 28 per top to top. But one of the things we talked about, I mean, the advantage of having lay down curbs is you can you can get the wheels up and that gets that creates an even wider path. I think the question was. Do currently want that or do currently want people off, I mean, on the street and not not up in the grass? The question is, where do we talk about that? Where are the lines drawn? How do we, what do we want to enforce? And I guess that's that's what we were talking about is, I mean, my thought that I bounced off of a bill this afternoon was simply saying if your car is in the public street, it needs to be all in the public street. Does that make sense? Not not shouldn't have any part of it up in the the grass, if any part of it's in the public right of way. I think that's, I'm not sure what the verbiage is, but basically if it's if part of it's in the street, then it should be in the street safely. There is some, I remember when I was taking drivers in, you had to park within a certain number of inches of the curb, right? When I park in the valley or any place with lay down curbs, I you can feel when your tires sort of touch that curb and go up a little bit. And that's that's the ideal is to put your tires up on the curb just a little bit so that you know you're there. With the hard side curbs, that's a little bit more difficult because you run the risk of damaging rims and things like that. But that's just the discussion is sort of open about where we're at with it. And we've talked about it sort of multiple times.
Well, I've addressed it, Mike, just what you're saying. If there are two vehicles side by side.
Right.
If there's 12 feet between them. They're not, they're not illegal. Correct me on that, Troy, if that's the case, if that's not the case, because that's what I've been told.
As far as the code.
Between the two vehicles, if there's 12, if it's 12 feet or more, they are not in violation. And there's no citations or anything that can be made to.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know that off the top of my head.
John Ferran is one that.
Yes.
That made that so.
Code enforcement is.
I'm just, okay, that's that's my source, just so you know I'm not.
Anybody else got any other discussion? I mean, I think part of the problem was is there there was this thought process that we already had an ordinance that kept people from parking in the grass.
Well, that's.
And we don't.
We don't. That's that's the issue. Yeah.
And so the issue is, is that something that the residents, is that something that the residents want? Is that something that the residents want to keep from happening? If so, reach out to your council members. I do think it affects property values. I think it affects resale value on your house, you know, I mean. I mean, let's face it, when you drive into a neighborhood, what's going to look better, people parking on the street or when people park up in the grass? So I think it's, you know, the reason why it's there's no action tonight is because it's it's a discussion topic. I think we need to get the temperature of the residents to see what do they want? Do they do they want an ordinance that is that strict that keeps people from parking in the grass so that does protect their property values? Or they say, no, we're we're fine with with the risk because we want to be able to park wherever we want. And maybe there is some concern about emergency vehicles. But like you said, I mean, the streets in the valley are pretty wide. I can't imagine that's much of an issue there. And.
I think the greater concern, which is would be more so park up on your grass. If somebody's parking, you know, on the curb and they get part of the wheel on the grass, I don't think that's the end of the world. I think more so would be. Right.
And that's.
But you have to have a line.
We do have to have a line. I agree.
There's got to be a line somewhere. You can't you can't be a judgment call every every single time. You don't want just anybody parking on your grass, but if it's your car on your grass.
Well, and that's the problem though. So a lot of people have sprinkler heads all the way up on the curb. I don't know why, but they do. And you park the other, you know, not not you park there and break sprinkler heads. I think there's there's some thoughts here. And there is a right of way there. Yeah. Put your sprinkler head there. I would not put a sprinkler head there, but.
Well, I wouldn't want them on my grass. I wouldn't park there. I'd probably say something to somebody. My problem of having an ordinance is enforcing it.
Right.
That's that's why you have to have to me.
You gotta drop.
We have to have a line of something. What is it? The touch of the grass, is it a half wheel, a whole wheel?
That's that would be my suggestion. If this was something that you would end up passing, then it needs to be something that is clearly defined. Because that's a lot of times what what happens during enforcement of some of these codes. There's not clear defined rules. So there's a lot of guesswork involved. So if you do pass something, I just suggest that y'all look it over really good and and write something up that is clearly defined on what it is. What is parking on the grass? How many wheels? How far off on on the grass that it needs to be? So just my suggestion.
I think more so residents are going to be surprised that there wasn't an ordinance, even though we've been told for years that there was.
Right. By the way, the interwebs says that you have to park within 12 inches of the curb.
There you go.
No idea if that's true or not. I'm just going off of Google.
The the common practice that we have been taking is Stephanie, our code enforcement officer, if she sees a car on the grass, she'll ask the resident to move it. I think usually or more often than not, we get compliance, but we can't make them if they don't want to. We don't have the the ordinance in place.
Well, again, I'll just, so that we don't belabor the point, I'll just say that as residents, if you would like to see something like that in place, please reach out to one of the city council members and let them know your thoughts on it, one way or the other. Whether you do do like the idea or don't like the idea. Y'all see. Okay, with that, we will move on to item 14, which is Update Regarding Police Department Programs and Long Term Planning.
So Mayor and Council, I just wanted to provide you with an update on some of the accomplishments we've had and what we have in store for the future. So with the police departments refocus, we've reduced the amount of time that we allocated to the Woodlands Township as well as reduced and officers requirements for recording their daily activities. And then reduced the code enforcement responsibilities, not eliminate them, but we did reduce some of the responsibilities. So with that reduction of time, we were able to focus more on the crime that was occurring in the city. So with that reduction of crime, we were able to increase our criminal apprehension, which we feel has has helped in reducing some of the crimes, as you can see from the statistics there. There is, with the sexual assaults, it shows an increase. However, with that increase, we have a lot of, actually, there was 14 of the sexual assaults were actually in the city, primarily in the hotels. The rest of those occurred at the, well, didn't occur in the city. They just came to the hospital and we took the initial report to get the the report started, the investigation investigation started. So the rest of those were actually outside of the city. Y'all have any questions with those?
Sounds good.
No, I know, Troy, that like the theft numbers, I know how those work out because, say, our Home Depot, they know that you come and you take care of them versus the Home Depot in Conroe. They know nobody's coming. So you guys actually apprehend people.
Correct. Those are, there's a lot of apprehensions and stuff within those thefts because of, like you said, we have a very good working relationship with Home Depot. We solve a lot of their crimes that that they have at other stores. And that's the reason why they place the loss prevention officers inside the store is because they know our response time is fantastic. So the guys get there on time to actually make an apprehension. So absolutely, yes, sir.
Thanks for having those relations with them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
These these efforts that you made that resulted in these arrests, have they, has that effort taken away from the safety and security of the residents within the neighborhoods?
No, sir, not at all. In fact, it has reduced a lot of these crimes. As you can see, a lot of the burglaries have been reduced compared to the to the last three years. So I feel it's, if you can look here, the homicide, well, we've only had three in the last six years, but also the robberies have decreased. So a lot of the criminal apprehension, it's my philosophy that with a lot of criminal apprehensions, people see the lights, they see everything, they see us out there. We tell them, they know my motto, the officers know my motto, let them know where we're at. So we tell these people when we make apprehensions, you're in Shenandoah now. So because some people don't know where that's at, but they'll know when they've been arrested. So we like to get that out there. And then with that, we feel that that has made a lot of difference with with the crime and reducing the crime. So I definitely feel like it is is getting better. We've increased our traffic stops significantly, 26% compared to the previous three years. And including in the residents, we've had more residential traffic stops this last year than we've ever had in the history of Shenandoah. So the guys are getting getting after it. I'm very proud of of the accomplishments they've made.
I've noticed the residential coverage has increased.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's it's and it's it's going to be cyclical with crime. It just happens. The trends, they're nationwide. The Cadillac converter thefts, those are trends. Those are those are criminal trends. It's gone on all over the place. The difference between Shenandoah and everywhere else is the fact that these guys catch people. If you look on our Facebook page, you can see that we've had multiple apprehensions on the Cadillac converter thefts. So my hat's off to these guys. They're working really hard. They're doing exactly what I asked. When we came in and started everything, when I first got chief, I put a lot on them. I have high expectations and I feel like they've they stepped up to those expectations.
Start to the top, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that the residents know that they're being covered on their local streets.
Yes.
Because I know that there's a lot of kids out there racing up and down these streets and running stop signs and creating a hazard. I want to make sure that they.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
They're being covered as well.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Like I say, we've had more traffic stops this last year in the residence than we've ever had. So the guys are definitely in there. You know, some people, you don't see them all the time because, you know, if you turn your back on the window for a minute, you know.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you got more? Come on.
Um, with the.
We love more updates.
Yes, sir. With the outreach programs, we started the Blue Santa program, Raising Gifts for Children's Needs. High school outreach program, actually had an officer come to me with this program. These these are for kids that just need need some mentorship. There are kids that are usually in the ISS, they're usually after school suspension, in-school suspension, stuff like that. We meet with those kids, talk to them, talk about the myths of, you know, law enforcement and and try to build a rapport with them. We also started our read along program where we go to the elementary schools and and the officers read to them and develop a relationship with them as well. The Cops for Kids Honor Roll Program, this is program, again, goes to the kids. If they have an honor roll, it doesn't matter if it's from Quest or from the resident kids at the in the residence, they bring their report cards in, show that they had an honor roll, we we pass out little gift bags for them. Citizens Police Academy, we start, we started that. I think that's been successful. Well, actually, this tomorrow, we'll we'll have a class on patrol. And then community awareness program, we want to start kicking that off again as well. As far as the future, what the police department, some of the issues that we're going to face is the growth from the multifamily dwellings and businesses that'll continue to to come in. And the mobility with the the traffic will have heavier traffic with more businesses and more multifamily dwellings. And of course, with that, it's going to come crime. You'll you'll never completely eliminate crime, but we can do our best to to try to reduce it to the best we can. And then we have our needs, upcoming needs. Of course, we're going to have to increase the police force throughout the years as the city continues to grow in population and and commercial.
Y'all have any questions or anything?
I do not. Sounds good.
Thanks, Troy.
I think you're doing a great job at balancing the law enforcement and the community relations. That's a very important aspect of police work, as you you know.
Yes, sir.
So I want to compliment you on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. With that, we will move into item 15, which is an update regarding the IDC.
Council, now that we are about three fourths of the way through the IDC, I thought it was time for an update. First thing I'm going to say is that you have a hardworking planning and zoning commission. Not only are they hardworking, they are digging into the IDC. It has not always been so much fun, but but they are in it and have been working hard. So far, and as I reported several months ago, Planning and Zoning has finished its review of all of the residential zones and will be probably recommending to city council the elimination of zones R35, R22, and R10. On the non-residential side, Planning and Zoning has made the decision to recommend the city council eliminating the Sports Hospitality District and the C2 Zone. The C2 Zone is one which. The C-2 Zone is one which is more restrictive than office commercial, and every request that we have had, when developers look at the two choices, take office commercial. As a result, we have nothing in the C-2 Zone. With regard to the other districts, the restricted office, O-1, office commercial, the commercial corridor, light medium and heavy industrial, there will be probably very few changes, and those would be probably adding or taking away some special use permits. We have spent a considerable amount of time studying the RC Zone. We do not have a final recommendation at this time, but I believe the recommendation, given the limited number of RC Zone properties, will probably come back leaving that zone in place, but also recommending that we leave the pilot in place for companies that choose to build in that zone. For the last several months, we have been working diligently on the C-3 Zone. And can you, the C-3 Zone currently is in Neighborhood Services, and if you look at the map on the wall, it runs from Wellman Road along I-45 down to Research Forest. In the comprehensive plan that you passed, this was designated as a redevelopment zone. It's the area that runs from basically City Hall, past Days Inn, past the two service stations, into La Quinta and Denny's. When Planning and Zoning looked at this, we also looked at what is now the C-3 Zone, and it fits within some, fits pretty well into a redevelopment zone and takes into consideration a balancing of being adjacent to a neighborhood, residential, and yet also in a prime retail or commercial location. And Planning and Zoning has spent a long time studying that zone. We have met with every property owner except one. We have met with restaurant developer, an apartment developer, with blower engineering, with a hotel developer, all getting their input on this zone. And we have addressed with the developers the issue of being adjacent to residential property. As a result of that, you will be seeing shortly a new C-3 Zone with the use, if you look at the use chart, 4.9.5, you will see a number of items or types of businesses that would not be allowed in that zone, a number that would be allowed by special use permit. I know that some of you don't particularly like special use permits, but Planning and Zoning feels that this area is so unique that the city should have more input on what goes there than perhaps if it were on the east side of I-45, right along the I-45 corridor. I will be sending each of you that zone with the recommendations of Planning and Zoning. We are planning right now to complete our study of the RC Zone and complete our recommendations to City Council on that. And we will then move to Chapter Five of the IDC, which is very important because it has all the development requirements, and we've, over the years, found things that are issues that need to be corrected. Once that is completed, the other chapters of the IDC, Six, Seven, Eight, are primarily governed by the Texas Local Government Code, and so the only updates there will be really changes made by the Texas Legislature. So that's where we are, and the plan right now is, over the next few months, to give you sections at a time of our recommendations, so you'll have time to study it, make comments. We can then take those comments back to Planning and Zoning, because this is a large project. Let's kind of take it, you know, small pieces at a time. But that's where we are. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Bill?
Yeah, can you elaborate for those who don't know what the, like, you said the eliminating R-35, 25, and 10?
Yes, yes.
What is the reason for that?
Yes. The R-35, R-22, and R-10 zones, R-35 are lots that are 35,000 square feet or larger. Frankly, we don't have any residential property in the city that are 35,000 square feet or larger.
It left.
And don't expect to have any. R-22 is 22,000 square feet or larger. R-10 is 10,000 square feet or larger, but the R-6 Zone and the R-10 Zone requirements are virtually identical. So you, there's really no difference if you're building a house on a 6,000 square foot lot or 10 in terms of our requirements.
Is that going to matter for redevelopment, though? I mean, not that I think we have to worry about it anytime soon, but you do have some lots that size.
Yes.
There are houses sitting on them.
Yes.
They're not residential, they're not R.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. No, we do.
I don't know how big the one in Tuscany is, but that's got to be 40-something thousand square feet.
The, when you look at the requirements for, let's take the R-35 versus the R-6. It requires, and I've forgotten, a minimum of 2,000 square feet. Nobody's building a 2,000 square foot house on 35,000 square foot lot. So none of those, those residential zones that we've talked about have ever been used, and we just don't think they're meaningful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, Bill, appreciate it. Okay, item 16, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt the Minutes of the November 17 and the December 15, 2021 Regular Meetings.
May I make a motion to adopt the minutes of November 17 into December 15 meetings?
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Brott. A second by Councilman Oscato. He beat you to it. Sorry, Councilman Remaker.
Didn't hear it.
Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We have our second Citizens Forum. I did not have anybody sign up to speak, but Ms. Esther Lum would like to come speak. I don't need to restate the rules, you know them.
I was just going to give my name and address. Yeah, Esther Lum, 31 South Emery Bend. I support the discussion to table the purchase of the Tahoes. I had read that in the minutes, and I support the decision because we all have to make sacrifices right now. Everyone is getting hit with higher prices. The second thing is, I wasn't going to say anything about late hours and cats. Betty brought it up, and I am extremely disappointed at the way that vote went because I've heard from this council that you're not interested in late hours next to residents, and you've got a ton of apartments over there, and there's going to be apartments right next to cats'. And when we looked at the chart, I believe that we saw 17% increase in DWIs. I applaud Councilman McLeod for standing strong on the late hours, but I'm very disappointed. And I think we need to have, it just seemed like this is very ad hoc because last August, we protested, the same people protested late hours for the Thai restaurant, and the council listened. But this time, it was like the decision was already made because we went to Planning and Zoning, we made the same argument. Planning and Zoning heard us presumably, but there was no discussion about what the residents said. And this last meeting, you had the retired National Executive Director of the National Safety Council, his organization, all they deal in is with data related to these accidents. And so, again, I'm disappointed as a resident, and to discount and say, well, that district on the east side is mostly entertainment, it's not true. There's going to be probably as many residents over there as there are on this side once those apartments are built out. So that's all I have to say. It's done, and I don't know that we can change it, but I just want to express my opinions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move into item 18, which is City Administrator Updates. That would be Kathy.
Counsel, I've got a few for you tonight. First of all, we had Arbor Day last Saturday. We had 45 attendees. Home Depot and Land Care donated trees and plants, as well as the Texas A&amp;M Forestry Service. So it was another successful event. Secondly, we had a small garage fire in the valley. Some of you may have seen the Police Department's Facebook post. No injuries. Woodlands fire needed more on scene, and the fire was put out quickly. And upcoming events, on March 26, we have Trash Bash, and that is from 8 to noon, and the Easter egg hunt is on April 9 from 10 to noon. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Kathy. And with that, we will move into item 19, which is Council Inquiry, and we'll start with Councilman Remaker.
Well, Kathy already stole my thunder on Arbor Day. We had a great event, wonderful weather, and as usual, the Civic Club did a great job of putting on another event, so really enjoyable time.
Councilman Fletcher?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Oscato?
I don't have any.
Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Councilman McLeod?
Yeah, so you mentioned the Trash Bash. I know there's also some interest in the garage sale. That's, is that still run by the, that's 19th, is that right? Okay. So if you're interested, who do the residents need to contact if they're interested in participating?
Wendy Brott.
Wendy Brott, and I believe there's a Facebook post, and I think we'll get some information out there. It's one of those things, though, that if people don't sign up for it, it doesn't happen. If only have two or three people sign up to do it, it doesn't happen. I think we offer it twice a year, is that correct? We do it twice a year. And of course, the beautiful thing is the next weekend, we offer Trash Bash, so if you can't sell it, you know, you can pitch it.
You can throw it away.
You can throw it away. So either way, you get your garage cleaned out. But I think the garage sale's a good thing to do, and it's going to remind people that that opportunity exists. Also, I'm going to go ahead and go on the record, because I keep forgetting to send the email, I will not be able to attend the May 25 meeting, so I just want to let everybody know that. I'll be attending the, our first graduation, the Academy for Engineering Sciences, so I'll be doing that. So want to let everybody know that.
Awesome.
Okay, I don't have anything other than, I know we have one more meeting between now and then, so I will bring it up one more time, but y'all know the Easter egg hunt is coming. It's one of my favorites. Don't just show up, tell your neighbors to show up, bring kids. Let's keep making it bigger and better every single year. That's, that's why we are who we are, right, is we get to continue to do these events for our community. This is the fun part, is the Easter egg hunts and the lighting of the angels, and that's the fun part. I've told you all a million times that that's what makes Shenandoah Shenandoah, is that we get to keep that small-town feel. So let's take advantage of it and make sure everybody shows up and has a lot of fun and gets to meet their neighbors and gets to meet their police officers and their city staff and see what community is all about. So with that, we will recess the regular session at 8:06, and we will move into executive session, and we are going to consult with our attorney pending litigation about the use of tennis courts at the park. So we will adjourn the regular session at 8:06. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming, everybody.